Good government to me is service to the people the way that they need it, the way that they want it, when they want it. So being able to provide services, whatever that is, whether it's health, many of our counties provide health services, whether it's transportation, it's whatever it happens to be, being able to make sure that all the residents are able to access that and have what they need when they need it. Well, one of the things they should know is, and unfortunately, a lot of people don't really know what counties do, they don't really know what their city council does, or even their state legislatures, and that's unfortunate in this country, that people are not as conversant about the different levels of government as they should be, is they need to remember that a lot of the services they depend on come from that government, whether it's county, it's city, it's state, it's federal, come from that government, and they have the right and the responsibility to hold us accountable.
Welcome to the Good Government Show. I'm Dave Martin, and you're about to hear a conversation with the boss, and that's Denise Winfrey. She is the president of the National Association of Counties for 2023, and we met up with her at a recent legislative conference in Washington, DC. President Winfrey is also the county commissioner in Will County, and that's just outside of Chicago. Joliet is the biggest city there. She's a member of the Women of NACO, the National Organization of Black County Officials, NACO's membership committee, and she's on the NACO Board of Directors. President Denise Winfrey dedicated her 2023 term as president to the RISE movement. That's promoting resiliency, inclusion, solvency, and empowerment, RISE. Part of that is getting the word out about the success of county government, and that's something we certainly support here at the Good Government Show. Part of the RISE program is helping residents improve their economic mobility opportunities, and it's getting leaders educational resources to help make more informed decisions. And it turns out, she's become an amateur plumber. So join me for my conversation with Commissioner Denise Winfrey, that's President Denise Winfrey, and that's coming up right after the break. The Good Government Show is sponsored by NACO, that's the National Association of Counties. County government is actually the oldest form of government in the United States, and it touches more people directly. Roads, highways, hospitals, schools, recycling, law enforcement, water and sewers, in most of the country, those services are maintained by the county, that's county government. NACO is a nationwide organization that represents all 3,069 counties across the USA. NACO helps county government work better together through things like sharing best practices, because when county government works well, well, that's just good government. And we're recording. Welcome to a conversation with, today's conversation is with Denise Winfrey, who is a county commissioner in Will County, Illinois, and she is also the president, the current president of NACO, the National Association of Counties. Welcome, it's great to have you here.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here.
So first, tell me a little bit about your NACO background and your the president. That's a big job.
It is a big job, and I'm the president now, but the way that I came into this is, I joined the county board in May of 2009, got involved with NACO in July of that same year. A fellow commissioner said, you gotta get involved, we pay dues, you should be a part of it. Got involved, chaired some other committees, some of the steering committees at NACO, involved in a lot of the task forces, and decided that, hey, I think I want to be president. So I ran for second vice president, which is the only office we elect to. And so if you win that, you're making the commitment to be second vice president, then first, then president, then immediate past president. So I'm now halfway through my term. Hi Kenneth, and at the...
Kenneth, was Kenneth walking by?
Bye Kenneth Wilson.
Who is Kenneth?
Kenneth Wilson is the county administrator of Franklin County, Ohio, which is the Columbus Greater Area.
All right. So I guess you know everybody.
I know a lot of people. I've been here 14 years, so I know a lot of people.
County commissioner is a difficult enough job. What made you decide to be as active in NACO? So your focus isn't just on, you know, your local Will County in Illinois, but you really have to look at what's going on in every county across America, don't you?
I have to look at what's going on in 3,069 counties, parishes, and boroughs across America, yes.
I stand corrected, thank you.
And that is exactly the job, but it is a job. This organization is 87 years old, and in the history of this organization, only one other woman of color has ever been the president. So I wanted to change that. I want to, and in my life, I've been first in a lot of things, but somebody always has to do that. So here, I wanted to be the one who made the door open so that other women of color in this organization would feel like they could accede to the presidency. And so it has happened.
So other women, other women of color?
Other women of color.
Other people of color?
Other women of color. They have had men of color.
Yeah.
They have had white women.
Okay.
And plenty of white men.
Sure.
But not women of color. Only one other, and that was '78, '79. So from then until now.
Have you met that person?
No, she was long gone before I got here.
Okay. Why is that important to you?
It's important to me because I want young girls to know that they can be where I am. I come from an ordinary background. My dad was a teacher, my mother is a housewife, and worked in the local politics, you know, that kind of thing. We're not from a fancy family or anything like that, and still I'm here. So I want them to know that they too can be here. It's the same thing I say when I go into schools to speak, I have friends who are principals, and I go in for career days. You can get where I am regardless of where you started, but you have to know that it's possible. And one of the ways you know that it's possible is if you can see somebody who looks like you in that spot. And so it's important to me that they be able to see somebody who looks like them in those places, so they can understand that they can get there. It may be a struggle, it may not be the easiest road, and they may be the first one, which is always hard as all get out, but it can happen.
What was the hardest part of your struggle to get there?
To get here, for, as for NACO, it wasn't as hard as you would have thought. One of the things for women, being president of NACO, is you're on the road a lot. So a lot of women look at that and say, oh, I gotta, can't be gone, I gotta take care of the kids, I gotta do this, I gotta do that, or do the other. I'm older, I'm divorced, you know, my daughter's grown, you know, I got nothing.
No husband in the way.
I got nothing. So, you know, so I'm just here. So I got plenty of time on my hands. So that makes it a lot easier for me to do what needs to be done. When people call and they want you to be at this state, or that state, or the urban league says, can you speak, or the school says, can you be on our program to talk to the kids about what they can achieve, or whoever it is, it's a lot easier for me to do that than it would be for some other women. And I know that that's a piece of it for women, especially if they're younger, because they've got children at home, they've got different responsibilities than I have as an older woman.
So tell me a little bit about what's going on in Will County. What are your issues there? What are you dealing with there?
Will County is in the process of doing really major upgrades and renovations. We have a couple of three older areas.
Will County, this is a Chicago suburb?
This is a Chicago suburb. Will County is considered a collar county of Chicago, or a Cook County, and that's because if you think of Cook in the middle, all the counties ringing that are called collars, and we're one of those. We're a county of 700,000 though, in our own right, so we're not a small suburb. We are a big county and very heavily metro, with some rural areas still, some generational farms, but very much an urban area.
The area you represent, what's that area?
The area that I represent is District 6 in Will County, and it is an older area of the city. It is in the qualified census tract. There are a lot of areas in that district that have been overlooked for years in terms of funding, upgrades, the kinds of things that make quality of life better for the people who live there. So one of the tasks is to upgrade those things. So one of the things we're doing with ARPA funding in our area is investing in those communities to begin to upgrade, because what we recognize is if we upgrade those areas, that makes not only that community better, but it makes the county overall better, which means that it's more attractive for people wanting to come into the area.
One of the things one hears about in Chicago nationally is a crime problem. Has that crept into your area as well?
We are not seeing that the way that some other urban areas are, which is good because we have had a lot of turnover post-pandemic in terms of our sheriff's police, not having the staffing levels that we need to have or want to have for that. So hopefully, people don't catch on to that and say, oh, there's nobody watching. But we have not, we're not seeing, you know...
It's not the same as it isn't?
It is not. You're not seeing homicides on a regular basis, you're not seeing smash and grabs, or the carjackings, or some of the things you hear about in some of the larger metro areas.
What is the number one issue you face there?
Our number one issue is being able, well, two actually. One is...
No, you only get one.
Only get one.
Okay, two, all right, two.
So the number two one is going to be the broadband issue, because that affects not only the homes, it affects businesses, the schools, all of that. Getting quality broadband, upload and download speeds that allow everybody in the county to be on and using it at the level that they need to. That's one. But the other is around, our housing is a really major issue for us. And being able to offer people housing that they can afford, that's livable, that you would want to live in, so they can be able to go about their daily lives is a big thing. We are the largest inland port in North America, and so we have a lot of jobs in our area, but we don't have workforce housing.
Is it affordable housing? Is it middle-class housing? Is it upper-middle-class housing? Is it lower-class?
We have a lot of upper-middle-class housing, but for the middle-class person, ordinary working...
And young people?
Rank and file, and young people, rank and file, first timers, you know, first apartments, first whatever homes, we don't have the stock, we don't have the housing units. And the ones that are there, speculators are coming in, buying them up, older, single-family homes, upgrading them a little bit, and then doubling the price on them, especially the rental prices. Homes that used to rent for $900,000 a month, these are post-war bungalows, three-bedroom, small, you know, little cobbies, are now renting for $2,500.
What can you do about that?
What we can do about that is, one, we need to pay closer attention to who's buying the property. And obviously, a homeowner can sell to anybody they want, but what we're seeing is, the speculators come in, and they're going to mom and pop, grandma and grandpa, you know what, aren't you tired of paying these taxes every year?
Your neighborhood's changing, you're no longer part of the neighborhood.
You know, nobody around here looks like you, they're all younger, they're all different looking, whatever. And we can buy you out, you can go ahead, retire to Florida, and they give them really what amounts to a pittance for the house. They slap, go through white paint all the way through, so it's fresh.
Looks good.
And then they double the rents, you know, they rent it out. And so we have one or two groups that own, like the majority of their rental property. Mom and pop had a four-unit that they were using for their income, now that belongs to the same speculator in the market, and they, you know, doubled their apartment rentals. And they're not huge fancy places. They're 1,000, 1,500 square foot homes, they're studio apartments, all kinds of places like that, but they are buying them up, and a person coming into the market wanting to rent has to go to them, or they can't get anything, because they've got all the market, all the available stock cornered.
You said, one of the things you can do is pay attention to who's buying the properties.
Right.
What else can you do?
One of the other things you can do is start to invest in housing as a county, to put some money into communities where there are older housing, older stock, upgrade them yourselves. Do some things, upgrade the area, make it more attractive, so that the people who live in there feel better about it, stay there, and that other people look at it and see it as attractive. You put in walk-bike paths, you do, give them money to upgrade, whether they need new roofs, they need landscaping, they need sidewalk improvements, all those things, and make a neighborhood more attractive, so that others can come in. And then you can put together programs that help for younger people, first job, whatever, can get the monies they need to help be able to get them in, whether it's the down payments, or it's first and last month deposits to get them into those places, so that they can afford to come in. You know, you can involve employers in the area. We have a lot of major employers in the area who could put some money into a fund that would help those people be able to get into those houses, have the money to buy them, rent them at reasonable prices.
You're not the first person I've spoken to here at this conference to talk about housing as a problem. What are you seeing nationally with this housing challenge?
We're seeing housing as a problem nationally.
Is that a fair word, challenge?
It is challenging, and it is a challenge, and it's a challenge in different ways in different parts of the country.
Right.
But a challenge across the country. As a matter of fact, we kicked off a housing task force in November of this year to begin to look at all the different facets of that property, of that problem, because in different areas, it's different. In some areas, where it's more resort-like, you may have a regular population of 20,000 that pays your base, that pays for things, but during the tourist season, that population may go to 40, 45,000.
Right.
So those people are using your electricity, they're using your water, they're using your broadband, they're using your waste services, but they're not putting money into your tax base. You want to keep them coming because you need the money they spend in your restaurants and whatever.
Sure.
But you also need some sort of way to offset the cost of having them come. So that's a problem in some areas. For some areas, it's older stock, for some areas, there's just no stock, old or new stock at all, and no land to build it on. So a multitude of different problems with respect to housing, depending on where you are in the country, but not a place that I've seen yet that doesn't have some issue tied to housing.
So what do you do for fun? You're a president of NACO, so you're nationally engaged, you've got local issues in Will County, in Joliet. What do you do for fun?
I'm a reader, and I love mysteries. I read, my dad was a school teacher, so it probably came from that, I don't know. But I love to read, and I love people. I like to be out mixing and mingling, and just enjoying all that there is. And I have all kinds of hobbies. My mother was a home ec major in school, so I learned all the domestic stuff. I can do things I don't even remember half. But what I love is either reading mysteries or being out mixing with people. I enjoy those the most.
When do you go to the grocery store? Do people like stop you all the time?
And that is the life of a county commissioner, is that you, and it doesn't matter if you shop in your own neighborhood, or you go to another neighborhood, people know who you are.
So you're like, oh, I'm gonna go to the Whole Foods 2 towns over, that doesn't work?
People know who you are, and you have town halls in the meat department, because somebody stops you, oh, hey, hi, how you doing? Oh, you know, by the way, this happened, or, did you know that they're doing this or that on that street down here? Grocery store, yard goods, clothing stores, you go to see a concert at a local theater. Hey, how you doing? Oh, by the way...
Let me ask you.
Yeah.
Do you mind?
Not really. Not, I don't. But what I do mind is the fact that our federal legislators and state legislators very often don't recognize that, because they think, oh, sorry.
That's all right.
They, because they're, they're a distance from it, so they don't recognize that we are seeing the problems face-to-face all day, every day, everywhere we go. You stop at your kid's school to pick them up from an activity, another parent says, hey, by the way, you know, or whatever, or you come inside for something, there's always something. Where you go to church, people stop you on the way out, you know. There's, you're always face-to-face with the issues, good or bad.
Yeah.
But for states, you're removed, for federal, even further removed, and for those people who haven't worked in county government before, they put ideas in place or plans because they're the higher level, and don't recognize what the impact is, one-on-one in the counties.
Which brings me to our questionnaire. Here's our first question. What is good government to you? What is, as NACO president, as a district councilwoman, what is good government to you?
Good government to me is service to the people the way that they need it, the way that they want it, when they want it. So being able to provide services, whatever that is, whether it's health, many of our counties provide health services, whether it's transportation, it's whatever it happens to be, being able to make sure that all the residents are able to access that and have what they need when they need it.
As an elected official, what do you use as your personal yardstick to know that you're providing good government to, not just the people who voted for you, but the people who perhaps didn't vote for you? What I'm saying is, how do you hold yourself accountable?
One of the ways that I do that is by who comes up to me. If people who didn't vote for me, and I know they didn't vote for me because, you know, I know them, I'm serving in an area where I've lived for most of my life.
Yeah.
If they're willing to talk to me about what's going on, or they say comments to me, you know, I saw what you did with such and such, I really liked that, that says to me, I'm on track. So when they are willing to say, to talk to me at the grocery store, at the doctor's office, at the theater, wherever it happens to be, about what they see, what they like about what's going on, how much they appreciate this thing, or that thing, or the other, that says to me, I'm on track.
So it goes back to being at the church, at the restaurant, at the theater, at the grocery store, people come up to you, and they let you know?
They do let you know.
How do, how do the constituents, again, the voters, the citizens, how do they know if they're getting good government? What, you know, what should they know?
Well, one of the things they should know is, and unfortunately, a lot of people don't really know what counties do, they don't really know what their city council does, or even their state legislatures, and that's unfortunate in this country, that people are not as conversant about the different levels of government as they should be. But one of the ways they know if they're getting what they should get, if I'm an individual sitting at home, and there's a problem on my street in my neighborhood or whatever, and I call, I make the call, or I stop somebody, and I can never get that taken care of, that's not good government. Even if it's not, if they call me, and it's not a problem that I can directly fix, if I don't connect them to somebody who can help them with it, because they'll call me about city things. I have no control over the city, but I know who's who at the city.
Right.
So I can connect them to neighborhood services, or to the tax people for the city, or whatever it happens to be. So, and that's also my job, is to make sure they get connected to the right people in those areas, wherever they need to be.
So you're fine with people calling you, stopping you, and saying, hey, I'm not getting good government, I need you to do something about it?
That's fine for me, because that's direct feedback. I know right away, there's an issue that needs to get taken care of, whatever that issue might be.
You're a part of a county government, you are a part of a national organization. What would you like people to know? People who don't know as much as you do about government, what would you like them to know about government and how it works?
Good question.
I try.
I'd say the one thing that I really want people to know is, and people make comments about, well, that's the government, you know, you don't want to have anything to do with them, I don't want this, I don't want that, is they need to remember that a lot of the services that they depend on come from that government, whether it's county, it's city, it's state, it's federal, come from that government, and they have the right and the responsibility to hold us accountable. They need to ask us, tell us what they want, and they should expect to get it. And so I wish they knew that more.
Who's your hero? Who are your political heroes?
Mm-mm.
In government, in politics?
Now you're really playing hard.
Sorry, I didn't think so. This is one of the easy ones.
Yeah, oh, okay. Okay. I don't know. I don't know that it's one person necessarily, but I respect anybody who takes the hit, if they have to take a hit, and owns it, who does not make excuses for what they've done, or what they've said, but who says, yes, that was me, I shouldn't have done that, or, yes, that was me, and here's why I did that, this is what the impact set's gonna be, even if that doesn't fit with my party, even if that doesn't, my caucus doesn't like it, this is the right thing, and so that's why I'm doing this, or why I'm doing that. So I respect anybody who stands up.
Do you want to name a name? You want to give me a political name here?
Uh, no, but I do respect anybody who stands up and says, yes.
All right, great. You're from Illinois?
I am.
Yes, you are. Famous for many things. What's your favorite cuisine in your neighborhood? What's your favorite thing to eat?
Ooh, and it's not necessarily an Illinois thing. I'm a seafood lover, and I'm also a soul food lover.
All right.
So of course, in Chicago, there are any number of restaurants that do an excellent job on both of those things, but I also will like really pretty much any cuisine, except I'm not a sushi eater.
All right.
I'm not big on that, but I do love fish, but just not the sushi part. So in our area, we have any kind of cuisine that you can imagine. We have dumpster dives, we have, we have white tablecloth.
What do you put, you're from, come on, you're from Chicago, what do you put in your hot dogs?
Yeah. Well, and my hot dogs, I'm not really a hot dog person, I like the Polish sausage though, and I put some of everything on that. I put the crowd on, I put the hot peppers, I put some mustard on there, and I love that.
Deep dish pizza, yes or no?
Thin crust for me.
All right.
Thin crust. I like the thin crust.
Um, when you were growing up, I mean, is this something you always thought you would do, is be an elected official? Did you, were you president of the student council? What was your...
No, and actually, I'm originally from Southern Illinois, Carbondale, Salukis, and that's my mother's hometown. My dad came there after the Korean War to go to school, that's how they met, and got their family started. So my two brothers and I were born there. We started school there, as a matter of fact, in the segregated school system.
Really?
But my, yes. But my parents were always very actively involved. We moved to Joliet, and in our neighborhood, they had never had representation on the county board directly from the neighborhood. And so when we were little, my two brothers and I in the backseat of the car, putting pamphlets together, my mother's driving the car, my dad's knocking the doors, to get the first person, black person, on the county board in Will County, that's the seat that I'm now sitting in.
Really?
It's the same district, that's the same seat that I'm sitting in now.
So as a kid, you're stuffing envelopes?
We stuffen envelopes.
For the same district today?
My mother drove people back and forth to the polls on election day, she was an election judge, my dad knocked the doors, that's what we did. My dad was involved in the sit-ins, my mother was president of PTA at a time when in our area, white women were presidents and secretaries, black women did the grunt work. And so my mother exceeded to the level of president. So we just, I come from a family that always has, you gotta get involved, you gotta do stuff. So it's their fault.
And you, your family, are there other people involved in politics?
Not in politics, but always in trying to make a change. My aunts and uncles, I have, and they're older now, greater aunts, great uncles, I should say, but have been involved over the years, you know, voter registration. I'm a deputy registrar myself, because both my parents were registrars, you know, have always been...
So this is a tradition in your family that's been going on for a long time?
Yeah. I didn't think I was gonna be involved in politics in this way.
Yeah.
But have always been one way or another, because they dragged us around and made us do all kinds of things, to get out the vote, make sure people knew, hey, did you remember to go to the polls today, do you need a ride, all of that kind of thing. So it's the example I had growing up.
So who are you an example for? Are you cultivated in the next generation?
I do, and a lot of the people in NACO have met her. I have a granddaughter.
Yeah.
And she's just recently turned 16, but ever since she's been born, I've dragged her around to meetings, township meetings, because I was on the township board, and I chaired a lot of nonprofit boards in my area.
A 16-year-old kid is kind of hard to get gazed. Is she into it?
She's into it, because she's always been since she was little.
Great.
I chaired a lot of not-for-profit boards, and so I had a board meeting, she came along with me. She's in the corner with her blanket and her toys while I'm conducting a meeting. So that experience has been in her life, always. And so now I have a fundraiser, nan, I'm gonna work the door. Okay babe, go ahead. Hi, how you doing?
Is she the ex-cover of Illinois, or what?
Hi, how you doing this evening? I'm Logan. My nan over there is running for, you know, whatever. Did you sign in here? Did you know, did you get a badge yet? She's on it.
She's good.
She's on it. She's, that's just it. So...
Wow, that's great.
That's the...
The tradition lives on in your family.
The tradition lives on. It's what my parents did with us, and so now I have her...
Finally, give me an example of some good government projects that you've implemented in your district.
Ooh, yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have, well...
What have you done lately?
What we've done lately is, we have had five major capital and projects that all have come within my district, because my district covers the downtown area of Joliet, and then the east side of, southeast and east side of Joliet, which is an older neighborhood.
And these are ARPA funds?
Some before ARPA funds, and now with ARPA funds, two of the areas in that district are older, and have sewer and water systems dating back to like 1949, 1950, have been pieced and patched, regular boil orders, do not use, that kind of thing. And through the ARPA funding, we are pulling those out, and so instead of patching and piecing, we are now going to be delivering safe, reliable, healthy water and sewer to all those areas. So we're stripping out new transformers, pumps, piping, the whole shot, so that we'll bring those up to grade, up to current standards.
And now could you have a conversation with any plumber anywhere and discuss water and pipes?
Like, hey, look, this is where it's supposed to go, I know that you're using this size main, you gotta do this much, you'd be surprised. And more to it than I thought until we were talking about what size mains have to go in in order to accommodate, because there's a growth in that area. When that, those piping was put in, the whole city was like 60,000, now it's 200,000. So the amount of people on the systems has grown, you know, households are different now than they used to be back then. You got somebody upstairs running a bathroom, somebody downstairs is doing something else. Back in the day, you had one bathroom in the house, everybody used it, so, you know, there was a limited amount of use. Now you got the washer and dryer running, you got somebody's doing the dishes, somebody's in the shower. So different use, so there was a need longstanding to upgrade all those systems, and to be able to provide people who are steadily working every day and paying taxes, the kind of quality service they deserve.
Last question, your answer makes me think of one more. You are involved, you are a county commissioner in a very metropolitan area, and you also have a national outlook. Are you optimistic in people's perception of government, and are you optimistic in the way government has turned around and reacted to different challenges, post-COVID, post-pandemic?
And I would say, yes, I am optimistic, because I see... And I would say, yes, I am optimistic, because I see incidences across the country where people are doing things that help folks understand that the government can be your friend, and not the typical saw, you know, we're from the government, we're here to help, but really here to do things that support our residents across the country, to help them have better lives, to be able to rely on us, to be able to know that they are going to get what they need from us all the time.
Well, thank you, this has been a very interesting conversation, I especially appreciate your view from, you know, two sides, from the NACO side as president, and from the local side as a county commissioner. Thank you very much for your time, enjoy the conference.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here.
Kutztown University is the smart choice for Pennsylvania students, or students